People ripping them off.
Oh.
That's somehow, I don't know.
What do you expect? Self-checkout?
We're on. Good evening, everyone. I will call the meeting to order. Slay County Planning and Zoning Meeting. For. Tonight, the approval of the agenda, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for May twenty eighth, second, twenty twenty four.
You properly moved in second that we approve the agenda as printed for the May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. The motion carries unanimously. The second item is approval of the minutes of the last meeting of April twenty third. Any comments, changes, anything on the minutes from last meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that Josh Swati's name is not spelled correctly. Probably couldn't read his writing in there. It's S V.
S V.
S V A T Y.
True.
And I also corrected Norman Mantle's name. I've already told her that.
Otherwise, I don't see anything, any other changes.
There's, I've written on yours.
No, no, that's fine.
If you want. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
You properly moved in second that we approve the minutes with the two changes of the spelling of the names of Josh Savadi and Norman Mantle has been corrected on here, right?
Yes.
So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I will move on. The next item, twenty four oh one. Staff, take it away.
Last month's meeting, we discussed the proposed changes. And to the resolution that we're, you know, putting together for the solar regulations. Because the comments at the last meeting were confined to only a couple of commissioners, what I'll do probably this evening is just kind of call on each one individually to state any comments or concerns on the proposed resolution for the record. There's really only two items, I think, that were contested in that, and I think that that was the acreage allotment and the height of the lighting, I think, is what was brought up, and I think there. And if there's anything else, you can remind me, but as I said, if no additional comments or changes leading to a consensus of the board or received staff, we'll have to assume that the commission as a whole is in agreement with these changes. At this point, staff would probably recommend approval. What I'm gonna do is option one is what I would recommend, approval of the submitted resolution with any additional changes discussed this evening. And then staff would submit the final version at the June hearing where if approved, the resolution would be submitted to the county for final approval. And again, it's based on what, you know, kind of the feedback we got. It seemed that the two points of contention were the acreage and some lighting height. I think the majority of the provisions of, I think we all, you all agreed to go ahead and separate out the battery energy storage from, from it, which staff has done. And I think the majority of the other items are just strictly for to just kind of straighten, straighten things out to make it more applicable to Saline County. And I don't think anybody had any other issues with those, but I said, like I say, I'm one to open it up, does anybody, you know, I'll start with the acreage allotment. Six hundred versus, or six forty versus a thousand?
From hearing from other, other folks, experts in the field, I think a thousand seems to be the thing to do, but I, I don't know what the consensus is this board's going to be, but I, I would agree with a thousand acres.
The only issue that I have with the thousand is it's just a number that somebody threw out.
Yeah.
And as I said last month, all of our townships are based off of sections. And to be able to break up two sections to be able to get a thousand acres, it's kind of ridiculous. The chances of anybody had an opportunity to sit in another community meeting before I went to Idaho and learned a great deal about this business. The chances of a commercial facility being put into Saline County is not very good. Whether it's six hundred and forty or a thousand is irrelevant.
I think so, too.
Okay.
It's easier to go ahead and grab a section of land and know you've got a section of land than it is to grab, oh my God, I gotta get another few acres to get a thousand acres, you know? You could do it. There's no doubt, but.
Did I, and I could have made a mistake, but as I read through this, by the time you calculate just the area that the solar panels were on, you're gonna be over that, that square mile. Because six hundred and forty acres was not the total area, because you got.
It's the solar module, and we need to make sure it's the solar module.
You exclude all the roads and the setback and everything else, if, I believe. So it's gonna be over to get six hundred and forty, they're gonna be over that mile square anyway. So that, that's why I'm saying is, is you might as well go to a thousand and give them the opportunity to get it all. Because, you know, they may need two square miles to do that. To accomplish all that.
If I could, if I, if I could real quick interject something.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's a question as much as anything.
One, one thing that I, one of the things you could look at is there are some communities that will say, like, let's say, six hundred and forty is a minimum not to exceed a thousand.
What do you guys think about that?
Well, we heard from the one expert that anything under a thousand acres is not a viable option. And that's kind of what I'm looking at.
But, you know.
If we put a restriction at two, six forty, we pretty well run everybody out.
Coming from the business of trying to sell it.
Right.
Whereas you've got fifty acres to a hundred and fifty acre places put in, in the southeast. And you've got two thousand to ten thousand put out west.
Right.
So all we're trying to do is find a compromise for Saline County.
Yeah, and I think you're right, the chance of getting a commercial one with these regulations is slim to none.
Yeah.
So saying six hundred and forty to a thousand wouldn't be unreasonable then. And if it takes more than one section, it's up to the landowner.
Exactly.
To do what he wants.
And all the other setbacks and, and site regulations that we have.
So, yeah, they, they're gonna need more than six forty in order to get six hundred and forty of.
I would still like to say that, that's six hundred and forty acres for the solar module. And then that way, we are very clear about the fact that you have to fit that inside the six hundred and forty acres. And if they choose to buy out around, so be it.
Right. Any other comments?
Word it that way.
Any other comments on that? Because there's one other thing I did want to bring up to discuss.
Well, we've got a lot to discuss. Let's make sure we finalize this issue. Everybody's had.
Do we like the wording of six forty to one thousand is our base?
Yeah, you know, not to exceed.
Anything outside of that?
And that's to, and that's the area of the solar panels.
The solar module.
Solar modules.
Not the solar panels.
Okay.
Okay. And are we all in agreement with that?
Yeah.
I like that.
That sounds good.
I think it's kind of opened it up a little bit more.
Yeah. Okay. Good resolution to that.
And just one other item I was gonna point out also, just kind of switching gears and going to the, the height, I think I, of the lighting is at fifteen feet, I think, at the facility. This does not include, like, if, if they want to light their entrance off of the road, it can be higher, because I know that there are sometimes, like, if you're driving in snow or something and you can't see, you know, where, where to turn into, there's, you can have a taller light at the, at the road.
But these are gonna be all the, anything within the facility.
Anything within the facility, yeah. That's, that's all that applies.
Well, that sounds reasonable.
I say, I can agree. That's a good idea.
And I, and I agree with that, but my question was, the height of the solar panels couldn't exceed fifteen feet. So if you got a light at fifteen feet and your panels are fifteen feet, you're not getting much light anywhere. That, that's my, my question.
Well, it's lighting up underneath. It's, it's lighting where you have to service anyway, because they have to, they have to service it from the bottom.
If, if that's what it is, that's fine.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else, Ken?
No, I think Commissioner Stromberg is online, and I think that is he trying to?
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear me, just the lighting.
Yeah, we can.
Got you, Ken.
Hey. What's the reason for the three thousand Kelvin or less for the lighting?
The cool lighting.
That there's, we have a fifteen foot restriction, but there's also a three thousand Kelvin or lower color temperature for the lighting. Is there any particular reason for that, or? I don't know, it's a big deal.
It keeps it cool, yeah.
Yeah, it's the whiter, it's the whiter light.
Yeah.
The warmer light.
Whiter, whiter light would be a five thousand Kelvin, three thousand.
Is that what it is? Okay, so it's, it's the warmer light at three thousand, five thousand's a whiter.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, as much light pollution as I get from Salina at my ranch, I can understand keeping that as warm a light as possible and down as close as possible.
Sure.
Yeah, because, quite frankly, there's nothing worse than me looking out to the east and all I see is Salina in the middle of the night. So, I can understand keeping it a warmer light and lower.
Yeah. And that, that was just my question.
That's a good question.
Good job, Ken. Thank you.
Those were the only two things that I had marked, and so if you wanna go into them more, kind of pick apart whatever.
Do you wanna go by section by section and go through it and look for anybody's comments?
Please.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. I don't think we have any disruptions with the definitions, do we?
No, no.
No. Are you sure? So then sixteen point zero two.
We've, that's pretty well, we've taken care of the site area.
Yeah.
Under our discussion of the, the acreage.
Yeah.
Of what has been, what is part of the site area.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll probably make them, I'll modify as we go along based on what you all have just directed me to do, so.
Okay. Okay.
So sixteen oh two, then?
Sixteen oh two.
Yeah, I think we're good there.
Sixteen oh three?
Three, four, I don't see any reason.
Four, I want to ask a question of the board.
What you got there?
You know, our two charges as a board, number one is protecting prime farmland, protecting the, the farmland in Saline County. The second thing is rural harmony. We've got visual impact, we got noise requirements. And I'm just throwing this out, see what you guys think. We don't have anything as far as a negative impact on residences in this section, key issues, just in key issues alone. As part of harmony, of rural harmony. Do we need it?
Throw some ideas.
Well, we've got a stipulation that residences have to be a mile away.
Right.
Okay, so do we need to, in key issues, provide reasoning for that mile away, which would be part of the rural harmony? I have, you know, visual impact, negative impact on neighboring residences, noise requirements. And that's what I'm throwing out as an idea. Staff?
I think that because the, you could reference the, as reasoning, the, the comprehensive plan, and you could cite the, the section and, and all. And so you could probably incorporate that wording into that as to explain, so in case a question comes up, well, why are we, you know, doing this? As I said, they can refer back to the, so I, I could put that in here as well. I could just put that reference.
What do you guys think? What do y'all think?
Yeah.
I think that'd be fine.
Yeah.
To reference back to that.
Yeah, because I think.
We have, we're. Each one of these are essentially referenced back to that section.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we need to reference every reason why.
No, no.
Well, we don't have to do it. I'm just throwing it as an idea.
Right. We made a recommendation of the one mile.
Okay.
Okay.
If they want to know why they.
This, right, and this is our recommendation.
I'm sorry, Ken. Go ahead.
Oh, by having something in there, it would at least, for those who follow us, can understand our reasoning a little better.
Well, that was my thought. It would just announce to everybody who reads this, they would know that was one of the reasons why.
Staff, do you feel it's necessary to, let us?
It, it can go either way. I initially, a lot of people will look at that and say that if they're not familiar with our comprehensive plan and the goals and objectives that we have outlined in the comp plan, it would be a good idea to reference it, but again, it doesn't really, if they, if they really want to push back on that, okay, well, why is this happening? All they, all they have to do is I can just talk to them about it and show them where it's at, you know? I mean, it's just, it's either way. It's either way.
Just some wording.
It was just something I saw.
Some wording referred to as described in the comprehensive plan.
Yes, exactly, and say, as described in the comprehensive plan, this section, page.
Yeah.
Okay, and what section was this in the?
God, you have to ask.
Twelve sixteen oh four.
Yeah. Oh, you're talking about this? Yeah, twelve sixteen oh four, right, have a visual impact.
All just as described in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's good. Key issues to be considered, and you could put in there, as described in the comprehensive plan, and that way.
As the first sentence takes care of it. Right, there you go.
Because that's gonna help people who are, like, let's say, out of town that are wanting to invest, and they'll say, well, why is, what's their reasoning behind it? And then that way, they'll.
As long as it's in the first sentence, as, you know.
As outlined in the comprehensive.
As outlined in the comp, comp.
There is the word we've been looking for, right?
We've got it.
We got it.
Thank you, guys.
Good idea. Okay, move on.
Oh, five?
I'd like to spend a little time discussing that.
Yeah.
Farmland.
Let's do it.
It's a big change from throwing in those words.
What do you mean?
Where we started with what class soils, it could go on to now putting in the Kansas Guideline of the prime farmland. That takes a lot of acres out.
We originally said no prime farmland, no statewide importance.
I say, yeah, if we put those words in there, that's a big change from
From what?
Our original class of patient soils. Do we want to leave?
It hasn't changed.
Originally, we were no class one, class two soils.
No, I corrected that.
No, we changed, we discussed that. We were class one, class two. Now we're going to go with this wording, which is a tremendous amount more land.
Actually, it's not. Class one and class two land is prime farmland statewide importance.
But this is gonna take even more. I don't have a problem with the wording, it's just discussion for everybody else. How do you feel about throwing this much more restriction on top of what we were talking about, just class one, class two?
Class one and class two is prime farmland and statewide important.
Right.
It's identical. Nothing's changed on that. Seventy-three percent of the county.
You're kind of referring to, like, the different area on the maps that we had?
Yeah.
Where outlined the class one and class two, and then
Class one versus.
Showed the farmland.
Right. We pick up, we restrict a lot more acres when we do that.
These were the.
I'm just, it's discussion.
I agree with you.
It's discussion.
I, I do not want to restrict it that much. I believe it should be up to the individual farmers.
That totally goes against our charge.
No, I don't think so. Look, there are people in this county who have oil and gas interests. There are people who have cellphone towers. There are people who have possibly, are there wind towers?
Are there what?
Not a lot of wind towers here, but there are in Ellsworth County. But those people made a choice. Yes, they came through this commission and, and went through CUPs, but I think we need to leave some of it up to the choice of the landowner.
The only issue I have with that is, number one, it goes against our charge. Because those were less than one acre size issues. Now you're talking thousand acre.
A thousand acre.
You're taking a thousand acres out of production. And you can put agro-votaiic in here all you want, but there is not gonna be any agricultural opportunities on that land while those solar farms are there. So therefore, you've totally gone against what our charge is as a board.
But you're saying that that's just people's choice or option if they own the land.
Yes.
Can do what they want with it.
And there are some people who own the land that don't produce.
Right.
I learned a lot sitting down with Josh.
Topic of discussion. Anybody else want to throw any comments in on that? No, we're gonna keep moving.
No, let's don't keep moving, because we haven't had a consensus on this group, on this discussion yet. We only have two people.
We'll have a vote. Any other comments on this subject? I mean, I'm, it's open for discussion, because then we'll open it to the public as well.
Because this hasn't changed from the original, and you're, you're telling me it has.
And I'm just asking what other people's comments are.
Well, only three of us have talked.
I know.
I'd like to have everybody talk.
Me too.
What did you see?
I'm just discussing the.
I know that, but you said you saw something different, and I'm trying to find out what's different.
If we did class one, class two versus this terminology.
Well, we could go back to class one and class two if you want, because that is prime farmland and statewide importance.
Right. That was just my question.
Okay.
It was a question.
Understood.
Do we want to leave it at class one, class two, or do we want to go ahead and throw this additional wording in there? It just makes it a little more wordy.
Yeah, and unless you're very clearly understanding, understanding the regulations for prime farmland and statewide, it's clouded to you. As a farmer, we all know a class one, a class two.
Yeah, I can look at my map. We've got a class three, class two soil, class one, class four. Yeah, I know what I got.
I can understand your point now. Does that?
But we throw out to the public, you know.
Does that need to be added to this?
This terminology here.
Do we need to be specific about class one and two and add it? Or am I not, has it totally gone over my head? For prime farmland, you can be prime farmland, class one, class two, and class three. You can be statewide important, class two, class three, class four, class five.
That's where I'm coming from. We throw a lot more. We put a lot more land in if we throw those words in versus just the one and two. But I, it's just a topic of discussion I wanted to.
The way it stands now, it says class three or above, and we want to, it did originally say one and two.
Just one and two. Yeah.
He didn't, Kath, I mean.
Oh, coming on down.
And two, aye.
B number two.
Oh, that's on just the grading.
Be located on a class three or above lands regardless of farmland classifications.
Three.
See, coming on down.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, it says that the, the solar farms, the utility farms may not be located on prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. And that is, what you want to clarify is class one and class two lands only.
I'm just, it's a topic will people understand.
We need to discuss that.
Yeah. Any comments from staff on this?
I just want to make sure I'm reading, is it, we're talking about sixteen oh five, down in number two? Item two, B two? Page five.
Well, two B two is only the grading. Well, two B two is only the grading. Two. Oh, okay. I see where you're coming from now, Dwayne.
Because the original maps that showed class one and class two showed a lot less farmland being out of reach than the maps that show prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance.
Once you throw statewide important lands, you go into class three. And that's where the inclusion, the class three lands go into.
Is that where we're picking up the extra acres?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where you're.
So we're now kicking out the class three people.
And, you know, class three lands can be, right now, they can be eroded farmlands that are in pasture.
Yeah. Commissioners, other comments?
Now, do you guys understand all of this?
We, yeah, I under.
You and I do.
The class one, two, three, I know where I'm at.
You do, but I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I have to rely on you, you, both of you two.
Class one is your best soil, obviously. And so we were saying, we're not going to let them have class one or class two soils. That's our objective in this commission. Now we're wanting to say, we're going to, class three, you can't have that too.
Okay.
I don't want to say that.
And that's throwing in what? Maybe another fifteen, twenty percent of the county?
Yeah, maybe that. I actually had the, the, uh.
But it's just for, you know. So, you know, cause before, you know, we may have been restricting the one and two. If we do three, we just threw that much more in the pot. And once again, we're getting these restrictions so tight.
We could never allow a unit.
Yeah, we're getting these so tight.
So you want to go just back to the classification?
I'm just discussion. I don't like doing, taking away the class three.
And I agree with that.
Yes.
I.
Yeah, I think that there was these two different maps here and there was a distinction in these.
Yeah.
And, and I think that the one that is less restrictive on top of all the other regulations that are required should be enough. I mean, for me, which I understand is just being soil class one and two. This map was different, which was far more restrictive, was prime farmland.
Yeah.
Yeah. And all the white here was only what's available. So this is so much more restrictive. And I think, you know, again, than.
Cause I think you do that, the thousand acres, we pretty well taken care of.
Keep in mind, there's no development.
Yeah. Right. I think we pretty well wiped it out.
You know, the importance of prime farmland is that we lost two point two million acres of prime farmland last year. Two point two million went to housing.
Well, and you made a comment, we have no trouble building brand new houses.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It'll never go back to farmland. And that's the reason why NRCS is very liberal on the use of prime farmland. Cause you, as you look at these maps, you can see that some of that prime farmland is class three.
I mean, we don't have any trouble building shopping centers and housing areas.
I know it.
On prime farmland.
And these have to have decommissioning processes that takes it back to the previous state.
You'll never take it back to the previous state.
Never come back.
It'll never go back to the previous state. You can try all you want.
Even if you plant the native grass on.
Even if you plant, matter of fact, I just had NRCS out at my place and I showed them that very same thing. I said, you know, my place has been beat to hell from farming, industrialized farming from the fifties, sixties and seventies. I lost all the topsoil. And I said, all I am now, I am not a native prairie. I'm just a grass planted prairie. It'll never go back to the way it was. But.
So it'll happen regardless in other scenarios as well.
Exactly.
And we'll open that to public comment. I'd like it to say it's just class one, class two.
I can agree with that.
I would agree with class one, class two.
Just for that.
Yes.
Just for that. You mean I win?
I just think we.
No, this is what this is about.
It came to a consensus.
This is.
We all want.
This is twelve sixteen oh five, correct?
Twelve sixteen oh five.
Yeah.
B two.
So just class one, class two.
We are going to eliminate the.
And they all got to be, already got to be up to six forty to a thousand acres. It's going to be pretty tough.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Still tough.
Pretty tough for this to get pulled off anyway. Okay. Just personal comment.
So in essence, what we've just done is we've said the, uh, LSE CSs and the utilities are all class three or only. That's where we're at now. Cause before we were making a distinction.
Yeah.
Except we have to remember that what we are setting is not po- um, not the rules, it's a recommendation to the county commission.
Right. All we're doing is.
True, but once it goes in here, this is our land planning policy.
This is our recommendation.
It's our recommendation to the county commission though.
But the, when the commissions adopt it, that becomes the policy for land planning in Saline County. Whether they want to change it later or not.
Yeah.
But that's their policy.
Okay.
So we're going to have to do a little bit more wording on that.
Yeah. Uh, no class one or class two soils can be used. And I think it's pretty cut and dry and simple.
And I think everybody will be able to understand.
Yeah. You can strike everything there and just say no class one, class two. Or class two soils can be used in any part of the site.
Okay.
How's that?
Yeah, no class one or class two soils can be used.
Any part of the site.
On any part.
Okay.
Any other comments on that? Thank you for discussing that.
Yeah, that was one I just. I was stumbling on that one pretty hard.
Commissioner Stromberg, are you, uh, have you been able to?
Follow this?
Yeah, follow us.
Yeah. Yeah, yep. I'm good.
Okay, next item for discussion. We okay on the location, we're clay on size. Our wording is taken care of on the size.
Okay. Staff, okay, anything else? Keep following with me on the next section, glare, vegetation, anything you want to discuss? Setbacks? We all agree on the setbacks, the fencing?
Yeah, the, those are items that really we, we require for anything commercial anyway. So it's not, not anything unusual.
Okay.
Okay.
Nothing. Signage, lighting, we've already kind of talked about. Anything else we need to discuss there? Okay, twelve sixteen oh six, application and required documents. Pretty well the same with any.
Yeah, we're to go, I went the wrong way.
Okay. That pretty well the same of anybody?
Yeah.
The same wording of anybody?
That's, that's correct.
That's kind of what I see in there. We don't need to, we're changing anything on that. Proposed any of that? Okay.
We do have them sending out before they even submit a CUP application. I've noticed, uh, under twelve oh six A, the additional public notice that they would send out prior to our public notice saying that this is going to be proposed. And then we would send a notice to the, everybody as well.
Just, just a question on that. Cause you've got them sending it out to a half hour mile, or to a half mile. But we've got the one mile setback. Does that need to be extended?
It's a two mile radius.
Cause we had talked about a two mile.
It's a two mile radius.
Yeah, it says within two miles.
Sixteen oh six A is, yeah, two mile radius.
It's a two mile.
Okay.
Cause we had talked, we wanted it to be notified within two miles.
Right.
And this is in addition to. What page is that on there, correct?
It's thirteen.
Thirty-one or thirteen. Thirteen, okay, that's what, okay, there it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, where it says half.
Two mile subject property, yes. Yeah, so we got the two miles in there that we wanted.
Okay.
Commissioners, anything else you want to discuss in that last section? Otherwise, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Uh, I want to add one sentence.
Where at?
Seventeen soil sampling plan, uh, I I.
Okay.
And that's only so that we can clarify what is being sampled in that section. And what I am proposing at the end of the sampling, scheduled sampling event, sampling should be randomly spaced on one percent of the soil modular area rounded up to the nearest acre for quote unquote, an acre sample site grid. That defines what a s- a, a acre sample site grid is. So if it's six hundred and forty acres, then they're going to have to have six acres across that section that's going to be sampled. And then it continues on describing what the samples and how the samples will be described.
A thousand would be ten, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good wording.
I just wanted to clarify what is not the whole place is being sampled.
Right.
Only randomly selected areas.
And which page is this? I'm sorry.
It's on page nineteen.
Nineteen.
And I will give you my copy, uh, so that you've got the wording I wrote.
Okay.
But just for the record, it's samp- it's after the surface soil sample location shall be established prior to construction and will be utilized for each scheduled sampling event. Sampling should be randomly spaced on one percent of the soil modular area rounded up to the nearest acre for an ac- for an acre sample site grid. And that defines what a, what that specific term is.
Right.
I just don't want somebody going out there saying, well, you have to sample all six hundred.
If any of that would come grading one or two.
Then we've got it sampled before grading.
They're out.
Well, they'll have to find another site next time.
Right, then, that would nullify the site.
Right.
No, no variance of any type. Cause we're saying no one or two anywhere on the site.
No one or two.
No class one or two soils allowed.
Oh, correct, correct.
So any of these that would come in with class one or class two would nullify the entire site.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
That's one of the things that was checked.
We're, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I think that's good, that was a good point.
That was all my comments.
That's a good point.
Catch.
Okay. All right. We'll have a pop quiz over this here shortly. Any other questions within my commission? Otherwise, I'm going to open it up to the public comment. Anyone like to come to the podium, state your name, address? Five minutes. Any comments to add to help us out? I knew you had to come to the podium, come on. You do, we appreciate it too.
Brenda Tulsa Marcus, fifty-six thirteen South Canadian Ham Road, Gibson, Kansas. I have three things that I would like to assist your team with. The first one is I sat here and listened to each one of you talk about class one, class two. And if I would take each one of you aside and say, please define that for me. I don't think all of you could clearly say that. So one of the things that I think is always important when you're putting together a policy or an SOP is to have very specific regulations behind what you're doing. And so one of the things that, um, I took upon myself to learn about was about the C, C, seven CFR, part six fifty-seven. And it defines what is prime and unique farmlands. So if I would ask each one of you, how many are you aware of the Code of Federal Register, seven CFR, six fifty-seven? Are you aware of it? Yes or no? And if you're not, that should be your starting point, cause that's where the definitions come from. And so in here, it talks about what is prime and unique farm ground. And it talks about what is statewide importance. So I think if you're going to reference something, instead of getting into class one or class two, if you would define seven CFR, six fifty-seven, and then put the definition straight from this document, anybody in, in the county, anybody anywhere could go straight to this document and know exactly what you're talking about. They don't have to come up and look at your comprehensive plan. They don't have to look at any evaluation. So it's about objectivity, okay? Do you understand what I'm saying? Yes or no?
Hmm.
Okay? This is, this is a code of federal register. This is how banking is dictated. This is how, um, OSHA's dictated, EPA, every, everybody follows codes of federal registers that come out every day. And that's how we operate our nation. So I think, um, as we are a progressive county and we're all trying to do a, a great job and you're laying down policies that people are going to live with twenty and thirty years from now. If you define things straight from the Code of Federal Register, then everybody's going to know right where to go and they know exactly what it means. Okay? Okay, so that's number one. So if I was going to put a definition in here, I would say, put in sent seven CFR, part six fifty-seven, and define your soils exactly as they're, they're laid out right in the document. So you could say, um, part two, subpart A. And it goes right into it and anybody could pull this up on any document on their computer and they'll be able to know exactly what the definition of the land is. So it, whoever wants to come in and be part of our county from a solar point of view, we're all dealing with the same kind of definitions. Otherwise, I can tell it's going to be murky for everybody. And we don't want the waters to be murky. We want it to be well defined and very clear. Okay? So that's number one, uh, thing that I wanted to share with you. Another, um, important code, um, that was laid out in here on your policy is you talk about NFPA. And, um, you're missing a very important NFPA requirement and it should be seven eighty. And it's the standard, um, for installation of lightning protection systems. And, um, if you have done research on solar fields, you'll know that that's a very important four tier requirement that you have. And so, um, I could take you, um, into your document and, and talk to you about, um, why that's important. But, um, if you want me to share with each one of you that, that regulation, I can share that with you. But NFPA seven eighty should be added besides, um, the eight fifty-five, okay? So that needs to be, um, brought forth. And, um, the third thing that I, I really, um, want to emphasize is I think as a county, well, no, I don't think, I know as a county, the most important thing you can do is always be objective and factual. And take your data from proven sources. So like the World Health Organization has already put out a position and they said, everybody within, um, two kilometers should be, um, notified and understand the impact of a solar field to their property. So that's one point two acres. So here we are, once again, having this nebulous conversation. And we're talking about, okay, we'll do it for one acre or one mile away. And I'm sitting here saying, you have a World Health Organization, you have documentation that has been well established, that is right on the record, that says it is, needs to be two kilometers, which is one point two miles. Why we're ad libbing doesn't make any sense to me. We need to be precise. We need to be precise, we need to be accurate, and we need to be thorough. So those are my three objective points. So if you need me to recap, number one, you need to go straight to seven CFR, define the property according to the Code of Federal Register.
Okay, let me respond.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna.
As, as the national expert on that CFR.
Yep, thank you.
We're not using that.
At all. Even the def, what about the definitions, Paul?
We just struck prime farmland and statewide importance.
I know, and, and I'm sitting here saying, why would you do that, and why wouldn't you just keep it clear?
Because class one, class two is clear.
But I can tell you, Paul, as a, as a landowner, I'm not aware of that.
That's been set out in.
That's been set out since nineteen fifty.
State guideline.
Okay, so where do I find that document? Where's that document at?
Any state, state NRCS office.
So, so I could go right into.
Piece of land is documented, their soil type.
It's the reason why we chose class one, class, class three land.
That's been set.
That's been set for sixty years.
But we, but we've eliminated all class three.
No.
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 Okay.
Did not, we eliminated class one and class two. Class one is the best land in the county.
Yeah.
It is flat, it is as level as can be.
But when you look at it, it's all around the river. So when I look at the maps, it's mainly where there's been overflow.
No, it is not.
Okay.
Class three land, class one land cannot have overflow.
At all.
So all the terraces that we're living on in the Saline Valley is class one land.
So if you put in tiled terraces, are you saying to me that that is class one, that activity?
It can be in certain states.
But is it in Kansas?
No, we don't put in tiled terraces.
I have tiled terraces on my property. Sure I do.
Class three land.
So now it's class three in Saline County, because you're saying we don't have tiled terraces, because I do have tiled terraces.
Tiling when you mentioned that, I wasn't thinking of terraces that were tiled for allowing drainage.
Okay, please define, help me understand, I'm, I'm trying to understand, Paul.
There are certain states that will put in class one land when the water table rises high enough that requires tiling to drain.
And what, what Code of Federal Register is this at?
That is not Code of Federal Regulation.
Okay, so where, where is it, where do I find this objective document?
It is not objective.
Okay, so this is just nebulous again.
It is more standardized than prime farmland is.
What is more?
The soil classification system.
Okay. So who makes that call? Are you telling me that the state soil scientist?
Scientist makes that call.
So Jeffrey Heller, okay. So he's the one who makes that call? Okay.
Now, technically, when I was mapping soils, I made the call.
And you were one of two in the area, yes.
Enjoyed, basically either agreed with me or didn't. But I was the one who made the calls when I was in the field mapping the soils.
So at any point in time, okay, so Paul, here's a question that I have for you. And this is educational for everybody, okay? So if, if you have, um, you make that call, and you're saying it's subjective, it's your expertise, okay? What happens in ten years if that soil type changes?
A soil type doesn't change.
It doesn't change, ever?
You realize your property taxes are based off soil type?
I do, I understand that now, I did not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can't change the soil type, that map has been put upon us.
But the governor at any point in time can change classifications.
No, they can't.
Well, they did on the Flint Hills.
No, they didn't.
Okay, what did they do then? What did the governor do?
I think we're getting off subject here.
Yeah, we're off subject here.
No, I'm just trying to understand.
We're gonna do class one, class two soils.
That was not soil classification.
Okay, so, so you're saying, where I'm saying, I want to be objective, I want to use a Code of Federal Register, and you're saying, this Code of Federal Register doesn't apply to you in Saline County, is that what I'm trying to hear?
No, it is not. For this particular instance, we are using the soil classification system.
Okay.
That has been in existence since the nineteen fifties.
And I'm asking, why wouldn't you be objective and use?
But we are being objective to the soil, the map that we already have that lists the, the soil types one and type two.
Right.
It's just, we're referring to a different document than what you have in your hand.
This is what I described to the, the commission last month's meeting.
Right.
There are two different sys, systems here, and the one you're using is prime farmland that NRCS set up back in the seventies to be able to define what is a prime farmland, that we are going to protect. And any NEPA, uh, grant that are money that's federally run is going to have to go back and look at prime farmland, and we're going to have to justify spending federal money on destroying prime, prime, farmland. That's what that was set up for. The soil classification system was set up to define the, the various classes of soil for farming applications.
But there's a lot of variables that go into that classification.
There's a lot of variables in the prime farmland too.
Okay, so, so Paul and.
I'm gonna bring your, bring it to a close.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm going to still recap. I think there just needs to be objectivity that everybody understands. We need to make sure that we add NFPA seven eighty standard into your, um, your resolution, and we need to extend, um, and comply with the World Health Organization of two kilometers so that everybody within one point two miles versus one mile is executed.
And keep in mind, we've already identified that there will be a two mile radius for everybody to be notified.
Notified, but I'm saying within one point two miles.
Notified, within two miles radius, they will be notified, they will know something's happening.
Should not be able to exist within one point two miles.
One mile, one point two.
I'm just, once again, it's objectivity.
Good, all right, next, next public comment? Next public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Staff?
Staff is going to recommend, uh, making the, putting the changes in that were discussed this evening and bringing this, because I have to advertise it as a resolution being considered, uh, and so, for next month. So, uh, that's what I, I will recommend at this point. So with that, I'll just turn it back over to you all.
I'm happy with what we've talked about. If you want a motion, a motion that we allow staff to make those changes that we discussed this evening, we bring it back next month, and we do our vote to finally send it on or not.
I second that motion.
Discussion?
My question just generally is, those of you who live out in the county, is this something that you can live with?
You know, I'm glad you asked that, because I was going to ask the same thing. There. I would not want anybody putting a solar farm across the street from me. Because now that affects my, that affects my property values.
And that's tough, we deal with that on everything.
Deal with it on.
Cell phone towers, we deal with that on everything.
But those don't affect.
I want to, I want to use my cell phone, but I don't want your blinking light next across from my house.
Exactly, value is different from a blinking light.
I mean, it's the same deal.
And so that's the reason why I think what we've done is a really good justification. We are notifying everybody within a two mile radius.
Right.
Saying, hey, this is a proposal.
Yeah.
If there's a, a residence within a mile of this proposed area, they have to go talk to that person, and they have to convince them that it's a worthy estimate, you know, worthy project. They can't just dump it on them. And I like those two facets about this more than anything, because, uh, you know, the class one and class two, I can live with, because.
All we're doing is making a recommendation whether or not we're going to approve or disapprove of it.
We're just going to have staff.
Approve.
Right. But the point is, I think, since you asked, and I do.
That's tough.
I think we've done our due diligence on this.
I, I feel like we have two thank yous for all that you did.
Appreciate it.
And from staff's point of view, thank you, because it was very productive tonight.
Yes, very much so.
So all I need is a motion to adjourn.
No, you didn't take a vote on that.
We had to, we're sending it to him, the way that we.
Oh, I'm sorry, so we have the motion and the second to send it to staff.
That's right.
You're gonna make me vote on it? Okay.
You don't have to vote.
What if he abstains on her, Mike? Because then we won't adjourn.
So there would be some things I would abstain on, but not this.
Thank you. So the motion is that we're recommending that staff rewrite it with the changes we had discussed, and bring it back to us for our final consideration next month. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Say the same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is passed.